Okay, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome. We have one more we have today, general fund.
Yeah, so we want to go ahead and go through the outside agencies, basically the nonprofits that we fund. On the calendar, it only showed general fund, but I think it'd be more efficient if we go ahead and do general fund and development corp. And then when we get to development corp next week, you've already taken care of that part. And in addition to that, we want to start going through the CIP projects. Okay? All right. So while she's passing that out, we can start with the, I'm gonna start with the bottom one, with the development corp. And the reason for that, I suggest, is that this already went to the development corporation for approval, and this is their number. They've selected to fund lift fund, South Texas College, Comfort House, Affordable Homes, Vida, Swing Street Band, El Milagro, Boys and Girls Club, MEDC and Easter Hills, no, that's not right, and for a total of $2,006,91. And so we can adopt those numbers, or obviously, the city commission can amend those amounts. So that's the bottom of this page. And so, obviously, Commissioner Omar, yourself, and Sevi are on that board, or is on that board? Tanya?
Is there anything else? Well, I was just looking at some numbers, just to kind of keep everybody in parallel. I know on McAllen, MEDC, there was an increase of 50,000. Boys and Girls Club again was an increase of 50,000 for their last year, that they received. So I'm looking at Vida, and their increase was only 15,000. Was there any basis why it wasn't in parallel with the rest?
If I recall, probably had to do with a mix of the impact and the amount of reach, and also looking at administrative expenses. I think part of the, when they had submitted, I believe we had seen where they had even stated that administrative expenses, salaries, and other things were going to rise, and we didn't necessarily want to get them dependent on their operational expenses with our increases.
Commissioner, can I, who do we have? Do we have the chair of CDVG here?
That's me.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's too dark, I can't see everybody. And so they actually recommended 400, and the development corp went with 440.
And if I may, I think I have an answer to that question on why you all went up to 440, because I sat in on the DCI meeting. It's that they were estimating about 110 students at $4,000 average, and that's where that 440 comes from. The 440 increase that, yeah.
Okay.
That's right.
So it's 4,000?
Their estimation is an average of 4,000 per student.
Oh, I see.
They were saying they could do about 110 students, so that's where that 440 came from.
In a recent conversation I had with, I thought I should have represented, that there was some sort of benchmark of 80 students or 80 persons that were assisting, but they are hitting 110. Do you suspect that maybe that agency could reach more persons if allowed more funding?
That's the number they were telling us that they serve for McAllen, that they were kind of hitting. And again, for them, it depends on the program. For someone in a different program, nursing versus, you know, auto mechanic, are gonna have different costs. So it's very hard to narrow down exact numbers in that regard, that's why they used the 4,000, and that's where they were kind of estimating 110.
Yeah, it'd be hard to go anything higher, because they're telling us 110. I mean, if we give them more, then we'd be asking them to serve more people. It just, it wouldn't even, it would be based on their application, you know? So I would leave it at 440.
I can't participate in it.
I'd be under 40. I mean, I understand over the years, you know, the number of persons that they assist is far fewer than, let's say, Boys and Girls Club, right? But this isn't an investment on an intangible requirement of an education right. But the prospect is, is that once they attain the two-year associate degree, it's a bouncing or jumping board to another level, you know? And of course, once they start with at least, let's say, a WEM, or even a WELD, they will help to serve a patient, go up to a CD, I mean, a registered nurse, and so forth, right? So even though the impact may be few in terms of numbers, I think economically, as they go in transition from a lower degree to a higher degree, obviously, their income status is going to be pretty rising, there's gonna be more spending, there's certainly more disposable income. And those are things that we don't immediately see, and I'm sure that you probably don't see on the application. But, I mean, that's kind of like what you have to see from the vision, in terms of, yeah, your help can just maybe a handful of 110 people, but the economic impact over five or 10 years will be that greater. And if you start serving the same numbers of persons every year, and you increase it, well then, I hate to use the phrase, it's kind of like a triple down economy, right? Where, you know, all boats rise, as Mayor previously stated. And so that's why I advocate maybe at least make it on parity with the other agencies, like Boys and Girls Club increased by 50,000, to do the same with, you know, at least compared to the prior.
Well, it's kind of apples and oranges.
We gotta balance out there.
You can't say 50,000 more for Boys and Girls Club. Well, it's the same thing with 50,000 for Vida, it's just, you know, the population being served is significantly different, you know, it's just, it's just not the same.
And you're right, and the population that is being served by Vida is actually a working population, and the population that's by Boys and Girls Club is a student population. You're right.
Yeah, the services are completely different.
Services is completely different, it's just, it's apples and oranges.
But the person that said Vida is obviously going to school, they're paying tuition, which is going right back to, in many cases, the STC. I almost say all cases.
We also fund the STC, we fund the literacy, we fund a lot of different organizations. And so, they're all getting a balance, and I see this, so I think it's a little difficult to say, you get an extra rep, you get an extra rep, you get an extra rep, otherwise, you're limited as to what you have.
They are getting more than they got last year.
Right.
Yeah, we had 425 last year.
Okay, you guys okay with that?
Yes.
You're convinced?
Yes.
Well, maybe not convinced, but we made some valid arguments.
Yes, you did.
Okay, what's the next one?
Okay, so we're gonna go with those figures from the development corp, correct? On all of them? All right. On the top page, or the top of the page, you've got agencies that come out from, are funded from the general fund, that's the McAllen Heritage Center, Comfort House, Women Together, RGV, Literacy Center, McAllen Town Band, Chamber of Commerce, Amigos del Valle, Boys and Girls Club, Museum of South Texas, and Valley Symphony Orchestra, as well as IMAS. I just want to say a couple of things, because I say it every year, and obviously, all of these agencies are very deserving, and the city commission has always been very generous with all of them that provide great services. There are some, though, that we feel, and I think the city commission in the past has agreed, that are kind of our sister organizations. And I just want to say that IMAS is one of them, McAllen Chamber of Commerce is another, even the Heritage Center, you know, they run on a very small budget, and the Boys and Girls Club. And so, if you look at those numbers, all of them receive less than they requested, and I just want to highlight that. Or, they got a recommendation from the city committee that they requested.
Museum of South Texas.
That's a topic of discussion every year, Mayor. You know, obviously, it's located in Edinburgh, they do a great job over there, but the question always comes up, is what do they do for, right? What does the city of Edinburgh do for the city of McAllen, and/or IMAS? And so, that question stands.
We keep on talking about we gotta thank regionally, and I do want to thank regionally, but I want everybody to thank regionally, and everybody to start spending in all the places where they should be, as they should be, but that's my concern.
Well, I'm all for funding some, the South Texas Museum, it's a, it is a regional museum, and it's a very good museum, and they've invested a lot of money. And there's a lot of private monies that they use to operate it, to grow it, so it's not only, you know, cities, it's, there's a lot of matching funds from individuals that put a lot of effort into it. It is extremely unique, and it is our history, it's not duplicated either. So it is the history of the Woodville Valley and the Ranching and Cottage community.
And I think we all agree, Tony, I think the message is more to the other communities, hey, I'll thought over here too, if you can.
And keeping on the requests, actually, half of what they requested last year, we actually bumped up their recommendation to $2,000. So we're already meeting 80% of their requests?
Yes.
I think that's sufficient.
I think so.
Okay, what else do you want? As far as IMAS, I strongly believe and share the sentiment that our city manager has reflected, it is our hometown museum, and I think we need to show by dollar signs that we're behind them, and the mission and purpose they serve, not only to our community, but to our region. And I would recommend that they get funded at their full request.
I'd be too.
I would agree. I don't know if it's ED or president, but I always tell people, when you hit oil, stop drilling, but I don't know if she has anything to say about that. Ann is here. So anyway, if you all have questions.
But, heat the advice, if you hit oil, stop drilling. Okay, so everybody good with that?
700.
700. Okay, anything else? Well, let's move on.
Okay, that's the only change then?
All right. Thank you again for the recommendation on the downtown bank.
We're pleased to make that recommendation.
Appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Okay, so you've got to pack it, what we're trying to do is make it as simple as you can for all of you. And so, what we've got here today is all of the capital projects, some you've heard of, a little already, and some you haven't. So if you're ready, we're ready to go. Let's see, I don't see that here. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I do that every time. So, the first fund that we've got is the original CIP, which is the Capital Improvement Fund. Thank you, everybody. And so, as we talked about in our overview, the first day of budget, we now have several capital projects because of where the funding comes from. And we wanted to separate them, so that you and I and staff could really keep track of where it comes from and where it's going. So if you go to the second page, we can start talking about what's recommended, well, I'm sorry, let's start with the beginning fund balance of $6.8 million on the page one. We've got some money coming in from FEMA for quints, then the hiking, I'm sorry, Morris Hiking Bike Trail, from other sources, Vision Zero, and for a total of $189,000. Then right below that, you've got the gas royalties number, that, as you all know, have been decreasing through the years, we're estimating 189. And then the second line is insight, $4,562,000 is what we project coming into this fund. For a total, transfers in of $4,751,000. Total resources of $12.295 million, very, very healthy fund balance. So now, if you go to page two, we can start talking about what's being recommended. So the first item, it's the far right, is city fiber, that's something that we continue to do every year. We are recommending, we do an upgrade to the canopy in front of City Hall, it looks a little tired, and it needs some work, for $250,000. Downtown improvements is a number that we decided last year to start plugging at 100. There's a request, and actually is happening right now, that's last year's funding for finance at the budget department, we're organizing and remodeling that area, be more efficient, we're just running out of space, is what's happening. Then the HR management software that we've been talking about, for $400,000. IT, some of the funds, some of the requests that came from IT for capital, we moved them to these funds, so that we wouldn't be taking such big hits on the general fund, so you're gonna see many of them in some of these new funds. So you've got $400,000 for software maintenance, $510,000 for, you see the description here, blade chassis with fabric interconnect licenses, file storage replacement, UPS replacement at EOC. The comprehensive plan, which is something that you've approved, we're estimating we will spend $200,000, and the balance will roll over to the next fiscal year. And then Project Smart, which is the ERP, that is zeroed out, because we have it in the new fund that you all talked about last week. And as you can see, it grew a little bit. On the next page, page three, we're recommending, there was a discussion here when the fire chief presented a couple of days ago, about a shortage, it looked like I was not recommending the fire aerial ladder truck, but in fact, we're funding that shortage from here, that's a very expensive truck of over a million dollars. Part of their radio replacement of $66,000, emergency operations technology, that's the, basically the technology at the EOC, I'm being told by staff that we need some work over there, we're recommending we budget $100,000. And then the fire records management software, also, the chief talked about one day, looked like I wasn't recommending, it's right here. Further down the line, we're looking at fire station number four apparatus, bay floor repair, we've been doing quite a bit of maintenance at that station, that's the one at the airport, we're recommending we continue to do that, you know, it's an older station, and we're actually, in part of the study that we're gonna conduct at the airport, we're gonna look at a new fire station for ARF, which we will either be able to separate the two functions, or move that station completely out of there somewhere. This fire restroom facility training, we can actually strike, because you funded it through the new funds that we received, you approved the entire, what was it called, training facility, and that'll include that, so we can take that out. These are more radios for fire. That's it on that page, any questions so far?
On the fire station number five?
Okay, the next page, page four, this is, the first one is loop cutting, that's something we do every year, but either when we have damage, or we need improvements, or we do cutler, we've gotta go and cut loops for signals. Pavement markings, that's just striping. Roadway safety improvements, that's a recurring number that we place in there for, you know, anything that might happen, whether it's maintenance or damage. And then, the next one is new, we're recommending that we start renovating the traffic building that we purchased a couple of years ago, for traffic, that's a number, that's $967,000, if you need maybe an explanation on that, we've got some books here that can tell you about it. And Lawdo, you want to tell us what we want to do there?
So that building is a warehouse, they did try to refurbish that, the insulation is somewhat inadequate, the roof is somewhat inadequate. So when we went through, it's almost a, close to 7,000 to 8,000 square foot building. When we look at doing a full remodel to move the engineering administration, or the traffic engineering administration, their techs, and then we have to move in an operation, you gotta, you gotta kind of gut that out, and then remodel it. We've used previous square foot pricing from different projects that we've had, and that's how we came up to that estimate, and then having to redo that roof, so that it does meet the energy efficiency code as well. We checked with building to make sure, you know, while we were doing that estimate, that what items would need to be upgraded to code, and that was one of the items, and that is a pretty big ticket item, once you have to go through, and whether we sheet a roof on top of that, or whether we have to peel and add a new one, it's still close to the same price. And that's how we came up to the 900 and...
Remind us the location of that building? Hackberry?
It's on Date Palm, and 20, between Date Palm and Hackberry.
Hackberry, okay.
The new one's on Hackberry.
Hackberry.
The old furniture store, right?
Right.
So this is the renovations, the new one, or the old one?
The new one.
The new one.
Yeah, we just bought the building as it is.
It was a previous furniture warehouse.
Yeah, we just did it last year. So we didn't do anything to the building, we just bought it for this purpose.
Okay.
Bathrooms, backup generators, roofs, and then...
It's centrally located, that's why we purchased it there, or what?
I'm sorry?
It's centrally located.
Well, it was available, and it was a good location for us, it's a big space, and, you know, we brought it to the city commission.
You know, the big fenced-in yard.
And we went back and forth with the seller a couple of times, till we got an agreement on the price.
So, so now we're putting 900 and some odd thousand into, for it to be used.
Right, like traffic, correct.
That's what the bill's right?
That's Tanya, say again, Commissioner?
Oh, sorry, that's me, Tanya. Yeah, that's to renovate the actual building, but I think that 967 is a lot, I mean, that's just, I just think it's a lot just to, because how much, how much did you all spend to purchase the building already?
You recall? I don't recall.
I don't recall the price of the land.
Yeah, but traffic operations is a big operation, and, you know, we're very confined where we are right now, and, you know, we've actually been looking for property now for several years, and this came up.
If we look at what we're paying to build the parks and, yeah, it's a lot, so we thought we'd get it cheaper by buying the building and not the...
We think it's a wonderful price. Tell me?
Any other questions? Okay, traffic sign upgrades, is that just as needed, or what is that?
That's a program that Marlin has, they go through and they check the retroreflactivity, and then they're upgrading signs, so I think it's just a pool of money, so they can continue that program.
And traffic signal installation, we've actually outlined some that we want to replace here, you've got Second and Yuma, 29th and Sprague, and then signal rebuilds, that's the plug that we've been using for several years. Vision Zero, is there a question? Okay, Vision Zero is a rollover from last year, and... Who's got over that?
That's a, that's a state grant that we have, have to, have some...
Oh, that's a presentation you just...
Yes, it was awarded through the NPO, and the techs that's administering it, we're hoping to get that kicked off by the beginning of this year.
Okay.
Before the year ends, actually.
Match in funds, or what?
It's an 80-20 grant.
Yeah, if you look at page one, row 14, we actually get 104,000, and we spent 130, so it's a really good deal. Okay, further down, 250 is just our ceiling project, asphalt crack ceiling, that's, we're adding that to the development, I'm sorry, to the CIP. The next one, the city manager's recommending, is a rollover on Dove Avenue widening, obviously a project we've been working on for some time. On the next page, tell us about the storage building.
Currently, we don't have a location to store our records, we have it in the context box. We went out to bid this year with current construction prices being what they were, we were overbid, so this is a rollover of those funds. To add on, and right now, we have five storage buildings that we built for Public Works, we would build one more, and then move some of our files that are in the context box and in Public Works, and then LBN would be able to use her second floor a little more efficiently as well, once we can get our stuff out of that area on the second floor.
How big are these storage buildings?
They're 40 by 80, more or less, each shelf, you could, we, the design we went out with was actually two shelves, we did an off bid to see if we could get more, but the prices were way, they've just been out of whack.
Where do we put them?
They're in the far west of, behind Recycling Center, there's the radio shop, and then, as you look at the radio shop, there's about five more bays that we've built, we built one for health, or code enforcement last year, we built one for Vida last year as well, and this would just be in addition. We've already master planned, I think she can build about another seven more, she has plans to grow her department, and as they go, that's where those departments would go, and she allowed us to use one of those spaces, or we could get the funding to use one of those spaces.
What page is this, and which side?
We're on page five, that was row 85, on the top.
All that goes in this thing are files? That's how many?
Yeah, we've had a storage problem for many, many, many years, and we add, probably every two years, we have to add storage capacity.
Like just paper files?
Yeah, record retention requirements.
Can't they be scanned?
We've attempted to do that, but there's just so many. They used to be on the up, the top floor of Public Works, and we moved them out, because we needed the space for office, and so, storage is a big time.
We built them through a scanning service, but how, what was the cost to do them?
It's well over a million.
Yeah. I remember when the bank did it, a decade ago, it was several million.
Yeah, just several hundred, a million, not all of the building companies.
Well, maybe you should generate those workers.
Well, actually, you can request to convert paper to...
I thought we had that, yes. So, on page four.
Page four is what you, what you did not recommend, we didn't discuss anything. Yeah, you've got the staff here to ask about those, I'm just not recommending it, because we don't have the money.
Well, all of, all of the highways and streets, you only recommended two of them.
Also this.
I mean, so what is gonna happen to 33rd Street extension from Oxford to...
We'll have to fund it elsewhere, or wait? I mean, from here, I intentionally recommended a cushion of about one and a half million on this fund, at the end of the fiscal year, projected, for two reasons, one, if you want to add something, you can, but two, you know, insight is what funds this, and if, whatever, they have you a bad year, they close doors, whatever, we have to be able to adjust. But, that's why we usually leave some money available, if you want to add something.
Well, the reason why, okay, look, all that area, all that neighborhood... Get, all that area, all that neighborhood, you know, that was developed, there was escrow money put, you know, by the developers. And then here comes, we, we grew beautiful park there that, and all of that street is, is not done. And we didn't escrow any money and the school built the school and they didn't escrow any money. And, and there's a need for Thirty-third Street to run through Oxford because there's a lot of, from, uh, from, I believe it's, uh, Incarnate Ward, north, there's subdivisions that are there that are at the backs to Thirty-third Street. And, you know, it, it just never gets done.
Again, I'm not gonna suggest that the project's not important. If you look at page one, you've got twelve point, twelve million, two hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. The request is thirty million. And so, I mean, we can adjust it as the commission would like, but.
What do we, um, I, I assume some of them are, are prioritized due to maybe a more immediate need? Like, you know, I know the one, Commissioner Aguirre was speaking about, it's a pretty hefty price tag. But do we do traffic studies or counts to determine if it's needed at the moment?
It, it part, but also if you look at all these projects, these are new. We've never contemplated them before and so, you know, obviously sometimes we give preference to projects that have been requested in the past.
You put these on the radar.
Yeah, and so we put them in front of you so that we start talking about it. This is really the, the reason to do it is maybe we need to look at alternative funding.
But exactly or something, but, okay, because it's new for this year or it's never been talked about. But those, those subdivisions have been there for, you know, fifteen to twenty years, some of those subdivisions. And then when we, we do our own park, okay, then we don't fund that, that, uh, that expansion either. And you request it from everybody else, so it's, it's just not equitable. And those, those neighborhoods are asking for it. Because, because they have been escrowed. And, and I'm not saying to do it all, but you've got to start windowing, you've got, you've got to start putting it through and it's, and that area has actually been pretty neglected. And there's a tremendous amount of residents there. So I, I just, I, and, and it would just pass through right now just like nothing. And I, I don't think that's a.
Well, no, what, what I do is, and I, I apologize, but what I do is I go through what I'm, what I recommend and then we go back and you look at everything that's not recommended and that's why the staff is here so that you all discuss it. I mean, I don't, I don't ever hide what's requested.
No, but when you say we go back.
Today, right after I finish.
Right after you finish.
Yes, sir.
This is my first.
I understand, I understand. I understand.
We're doing it a little differently in Tino, we do it again, so I'm trying again. But if we're gonna discuss it again, just tell me, oh, we are gonna go back and discuss.
Yeah, well, I mean, we can discuss it now, I mean, there's no reason not to, we can, we can.
I, I have, I have that item, I, I brought that, I brought several forms where we, we developed those estimates. I can just give a little quick background on it. We see this as a two to three year project, uh, to develop out, it needs a design. So currently there is no design. Um, there is parcels of right of way that would need to be purchased for this, we're estimating that at half a million dollars. And then at the point when we have all of that, uh, done and performed, we're estimating construction to be at two point seven sixty. So if you, if you look at the request of what we, we put down there, that's the full construction cost, but it's actually can be phased out if, uh, the commission so chooses, we can, you know, I have those numbers here for you.
I'm looking at the fund balance in, in, um, in development corp. If we'd like, I mean, we can do either one, I mean, we can start, we can do a design, do you have, I'm sorry if I missed it. Do you have a design?
The design is two hundred and ninety is what we estimated. And we have right of way at half a million, uh, estimated. And that would take us, um, from Trenton all the way to Auburn is what we were, uh, what we did our, our estimate on. Not, not just the portion next to our park.
Is that something that the?
Trenton all the way to work to Auburn.
To Auburn, to.
Wait a minute, Trenton to Auburn is right there.
I mean, Trenton to, uh, Oxford, sorry, I misspoke.
So you're saying budgeting eight hundred for design and right of way?
For design and right of way acquisition?
I think so. I, um, yeah, brought up an interesting point when you said it's a two to three year project and I don't know if maybe, how much extra work or if in future years, Roy, do you think y'all could add a column that shows the project timeframe in months? Like, uh, very big picture estimation? Because sometimes, well, you know, I think the generalized notion is we funded this year, gets done this year, right? But then we don't realize that some projects are really two, three, four years, it might help us look at it a little different.
Sure.
So you put like thirty-six months, twenty-four months, six months, you know?
Yeah.
Just like a column that shows any infrastructure project with a general timeframe.
Well, how much of the right of way do we have there?
Basically, the portion to the north of, uh, Incarnate Ward has not been fully secured, uh, for the project. Those, those haven't subdivided yet and so we would need to go through and buy those, uh, parcels.
From Incarnate, excuse me, from Incarnate Ward.
North.
North to Oxford is full, it, it, it's, there's all neighborhoods.
There's some neighborhoods, but there are some empty parcels in there, Commissioner, that, that will.
Yeah, okay, but it is all, it, it, it is fully developed already.
Yes, sir, for the most part.
That's what I'm saying, all of those neighborhoods, okay, all of those neighborhoods are, are, are full already. So that street is just like a, a street that should have been done as if it was, it was developed.
If they were fully developed, they didn't, they didn't escrow?
Yes.
Yes?
I don't know. Do we know?
There is some escrow there.
But we still have some, some areas that, that we need to acquire.
There's about three to four parcels that have not subdivided. Uh, for the most part, like Commissioner Aguirre is saying, it's, it is developed, but those three or four parcels, uh, when you estimate between, we, we're not sure, we would get forty-seven dollars a square foot. Um, you know, the, the price tag gets up.
Why don't we acquire the property and then?
I don't, wait a minute, it's nowhere close to forty-seven dollars a square foot, north of Incarnate Ward, those are residential areas.
We, we just use like an estimate and then we, we take it over to.
Well, I, 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 yeah, okay, you use an estimate, but do a reality type of estimate because, I mean, forty, when you say forty-five, you're, you're talking about, you know, paving, you know, it, no, I mean.
Sometimes when you're condemning, it's a little higher.
It is a little higher, okay, I, I agree, but that's a little exaggerated.
What do you suggest?
Well, I mean, all of those, it, it's right around a dollar fifty a square foot type scenario. Sixty to seventy thousand dollars an acre. Okay, not forty-five, you know, uh, dollars, dollars, uh, which makes it two hundred thousand dollars an acre. A hundred and sixty thousand dollars an acre. That's what I'm saying, I'm just saying that it coincides when you, and, and again, you know, it could be, uh, a little confrontational, but when you just throw out a figure, it could be this and it could be half a million and it could be this and whatever. Well, you know, there's a little more, it, we need to make some decisions here and the decision needs to be based on, on something that, you know, a little more, and when you say there's a few parcels, well, how many parcels and this much? Again, this is an area that is, that, that we, if we don't start it, it will never get done. Why? Because for the last twenty years, it has not started and it hasn't been done. And when you put a, a, a brand new beautiful complex and we do nothing to participate in the Thirty-third Street, the back hill, it's, it's not equitable. If other, if other, if other people are doing, uh, you know, putting escrows. So that's what I'm saying, it, it has to start.
I don't know of any area that you can buy right of way for a dollar fifty. I just don't. I mean, if you look at a lot that's been subdivided in McAllen, it's fifty thousand dollars for ten or twelve thousand square feet.
No, smaller.
You know, so even at that, so, uh, we'll, we'll, look, I, I think it's, and I don't think you're being confrontational about it. I, I think it's unreasonable for us to think that the staff's gonna have all of the information in front of them today.
Especially if it's anything.
Yeah, they, they went through their estimates, they, you know, they, they relied on certain data. But I'll tell you that four or five dollars is not gonna be far off. I really, I really believe it. I mean, I don't know of any lot, because think about it, you're buying properties.
This is not a lot, this, these are, this is the remainder of a sub, two subdivisions that have come from the east, coming to the west, it comes from the west to the east and there, and there is a strip for a fifty foot strip. Is that correct enough?
Yes, sir.
It's a fifty foot strip, okay? So in, the vast majority has already been done.
I know, Tony, but when you're buying right of way.
Okay, we'll, we'll see.
It's part of the lot price, they go get an appraisal of a lot and they say you're taking ten feet of that lot and it's based on the appraisal of the lot. It's not some special number because it's right of way. But we can use a different number, I mean, I'm just suggesting that that's probably pretty close. So who wanna budget for design and right of way?
Design yet, but we need to acquire, do all that type of stuff, why are we designing, spending already?
Well, he actually needs some design work in order to determine right of way and, and all of that, so.
They, they coincide pretty much.
Okay. Okay, and do we, wanna lower the five hundred thousand for right of way?
Yeah.
Well.
Well, it is, it's gonna be what it's gonna be.
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't, just because we budget it doesn't mean that's what we're gonna spend.
Sure, of course, I mean, we have to break.
I think we budget it to ensure that it, it gets done.
Okay, so we're gonna budget seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Okay. Uh, while we're here, any, any other highway or street that we, we need to start considering?
Well, which is this one on, uh? So why didn't you just envision road from Buddy Owens to, to the five mile line? Isn't that, uh, that's the next leg, right? Of, uh?
Yes.
Right?
That's the next leg.
So.
So that's what, that must be design or something.
Yes, sir, that's broken up into three sections, so that's got design right of way and, uh, construction at the end. If you look, that is almost ninety, ten million dollar project.
And this is new, this is something that, so we're going to discuss just this year. But I don't have any expectation for it to be built next year or even two or three years from now. Uh, and it may not be developed as to the area that Commissioner Aguirre was referring to. Uh, this is a two mile segment, but there's still a lot of parcels that are undeveloped. And I already know that there's gonna be a lot of, or need for right of way acquisition. But I'm, and part of that goes through my district, but I'm not gonna be pushing for something that really, there isn't a great need or a sense of urgency to have, but at least it got plugged in like this year, right?
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm gonna tell you that the need is, is becoming more and more. Because if you look at all of our north, south corridors, only Taylor Road and Benson Road are, are left, you know, to go, to go north. You got, you got Ware Road and then you got Twenty-Ninth and you got Twenty-third and, you know, Tenth and Benson Road goes to Mall Three. Taylor, I wish.
It gets complicated because now you have Palmer's, right? And then you got Alton, right?
That's correct.
So, and the easier one, I think the last, the path of existence is to, to.
Okay, but we're investing on Dove, okay, to do the overpass to get us to Benson. Correct?
Yes.
We are, so it's gonna go, it's gonna go through. And right there is, is, uh, you know, is a four lane already that, that's, that's new. Well, no, that's right at what the next phase is from, from Buddy Owens to the five mile that we're talking about right now.
We have that funded, uh, I don't know if it's to this, uh, account, but we have it funded.
The street.
Dove extension.
The Dove extension, that's what we're doing. So we're extending it to.
Benson Road.
Benson Road.
But that's coming from the street improvement, uh, time, that's a different one.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's a different one. I'm just saying that that eventually needs to, we, we need to start preparing ourselves, you know, how much, uh, how much right of way we need to purchase if, if it hasn't? Because it is being developed, all that area and, and you are taking escrows for that road on any, any development that's, that's going on.
That's correct, we, as, as, uh, any subdivision comes in, we'll take an escrow for the road, paving and drainage and sidewalks.
Well, so is this a project y'all are interested in? I, I think it's a, it's a project we need to start. So I suggest we move that to development corp because if we do these two, we're, we're in the red.
I agree, I agree, because those are development.
I thought we weren't moving like these kind of projects to development corporation, like road improvement projects.
Well, we, we don't have any now and so.
Okay.
But you've got almost twelve million dollars. We can or we can't, I mean.
I don't see any problem with designing and looking at right of way.
We'll have to jumpstart.
What is, what would be the estimate on Benson?
So the design is, uh, the request we have this year was nine hundred and fifty thousand, uh, four hundred. And then the subsequent year, uh, we, we usually try to phase it out because they're gonna have to do survey. This is a pretty long section, so the survey will take a while to come back, it's, it's not gonna be as quick. Um, so we think we wouldn't even get into right of way acquisition until year two. So i- if you're looking at it, it may just be a nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar, not that it's that small, but it would be the initial request and the next year would be a million and then the third year would be the construction of seven million.
The nine hundred and fifty thousand buys what? The nine hundred and fifty thousand buys what?
The design.
The design.
The design survey, uh, would get us the, the parcels that we need to acquire. And then at that point, we can go to acquisition, acquisition does take a little bit of time, especially if, if we're condemning, uh, property.
But as, as development is occurring, okay, if you already have your plan and you have, you know, the right of way that established, then whoever is developing has to pay a, you know, their, their escrow to the fund. So this, that, it, it, it's less and less towards the city because the development is, is, uh.
We could put the reimbursement agreement as, as we discussed in workshop for that.
We get a reimbursement agreement, so we're, we're getting money from the developers to put into the fund so that we don't have that much money out there.
Let me ask you this about, how, how realistic is it that we would be able to start acquisition of right of way on Thirty-third?
In year one?
Yeah. How did you have it programmed?
We, we put it all as, as one big request, but realistically, it, it'll probably be a two year. This was not as long because there isn't as much right, we know the parcels we have to buy, we could jump on that really quick. Uh, but we still see that as a two year project, we would probably be looking at right of way acquisition in late twenty twenty-two.
Hey guys, at the very end, we're still kind of, uh, in the middle of a pandemic. There's a lot of uncertainties, there's a lot of things, we gotta be very conservative with our, with our budget.
Can we come back and revisit this?
Sure.
Yeah.
Commissioner Aguirre? Do you have any?
Yeah, we're getting too close to the budget, I don't know.
Okay, so the suggestion is we're gonna move forward with the Thirty-third Street number and then we'll revisit Benson at Rapa.
Right.
Okay? And then another big one is, is Freddie Gonzalez, that's not being recommended basically because of the price tag. But that is something that we're developing to, to take to techs, uh, to the MPO, okay? Uh, the next one is, uh, we already talked about that. So lighting, I'm trying to figure out, we had said this was gonna be recurring. If we don't have it in another budget, I, I recommend we put the hundred thousand here as we've done in the past.
Which one?
Streetlights.
Oh, okay.
On eighty-six.
So, uh, we'll, we'll let you know for sure at Rapa. Repaving, this is. Uh, repaving, this is where we did additional money a couple of years ago for streets, and so that's something that, that can be considered. I just didn't feel we could, we could do it right now out of this fund. Uh, subdivision paving is a plug number that we use when there's a subdivision that's doing a perimeter street, and we need to participate, we take it from there. It's actually a very small number, all things considered. Here, I think, is a duplication. If you'll allow us to make sure, uh, the three hundred and twenty-five thousand drainage study for the newly annexed areas in the north, uh, I think we had it in the stimulus.
Yeah.
And if we, if we do, we'll take it out. If we don't, we'll leave it here.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll take it out of here. It is in the stimulus, so that'll get us a little money. Quince Avenue, uh, that's a grant that we're receiving. Further on down, the, the page is the Adaptive Playground. Uh, that continues. Uh, the, also the one that we're doing in, um, Palmian is, is a project that's already budgeted. So we'll see how it goes, and then we'll roll, roll it over. There's a chance it'll get started this year. Assorted Park Amenities, that's basically if something, you know, a park's needs maintenance, uh, that's a plug number that we use. Uh, Crockett, that's for this year, so we're not budgeting anything next year. Fireman's Park is an ongoing project. Horticulture improvements, again, that's another plug number that we use, uh, in case we need landscaping somewhere, something gets damaged, or, or needs maintenance, or whatever. Here's another one, looks like we're finding some money, because Caplar was in the stimulus. We'll take it out of here, and we'll bring this back to you in, in, uh, wrap-up. Looks like we're gonna have a little bit of money.
And you, uh, later you have, you have, what Caplar is.
Yeah. We'll send you the map, and we actually have a proposed side line for it. Okay?
I bet we found one and a half million already.
That's good. Okay, uh, then, uh, Library Chiller, that's actually included in the money that we set aside, so you can strike that. Obviously, we prepared this way before you all did all those transactions, so.
Larry, Chris, yes?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, Morris is the next phase, uh, that we're working on. We're requesting two million dollars. Morris Park. East Playground, tell us about that.
The East Playground?
Denny?
The East Playground, um, is there replacing the one at Muni, um, it's a private, private old playscape, and it's, uh, over twenty years old, so we want to replace that, so we spent the forty-four thousand this year on the place destruction. So the additional fifteen, hundred and fifteen will be the, the removal of the existing landscape, and then the core in place, uh, which is the package, uh, for the, for the playground.
We might know better, but what happens is if we do show them our, like, the, they don't see your number.
Okay, uh, next one is McCallum Sidewalk Improvement. Uh, we're recommending that. Uh, Oval Restrooms are complete. Mowers are complete. Parks, it's a mini excavator, recommending approval. Parking Lot Package, what is that?
The parking lot package, uh, if you take a look at a couple of our parks there, um, the parking lots there are, are a little beat up, um, used, and so we were just going back, and you can see a couple of patchwork as well, on, on some of the parking lots, so just going back and reasphalting it, uh, the whole class, and, and then we strike.
Yeah, I saw that. Is, it, but it says here phased over three years. Is that thirty-two thousand needed for three years, is what you're saying?
Correct, yes, sir.
So can we do twelve thousand for year one? Start doing a couple?
The money that we've found just today, I suggest we just do it.
Just do it, right?
Yeah.
Because some of those slightly older parks, Bilshu, Escondo, La Vizuela, they, you know, they, they need that.
Yeah. Paquita Mazatlan, uh, exterior lighting is complete. Uh, painting is complete. Stadium parking.
I don't know who that we're talking about.
Yeah, we didn't do it. Did we, did we finish that?
Stadium parking, no, sir, we haven't.
We didn't do it?
This was budgeted last week.
Oh, we did the new parking lot, right? But we didn't do the re, the redo of the old one.
Next to the stadium.
Next to the stadium.
So we showed that we're gonna do it, looks like we're not, Denny?
Not this year, no, sir.
So we need to move that over to the, to the next fiscal year, because we're not, we didn't do it.
So roll over?
Yeah. South Side Park Bike Trail. What is that?
This was something that we were looking there at, at South Side Park, um, to build a, a bike trail on the south side, um, and have different layers of beginner, intermediate, and advanced. Been talking now with a, a group to try to build a off-road, uh, bike trail there at Caplar property.
Well, you know what, but they, the commission budgeted, I wanna say five trillion, in the stimulus?
Yeah, I thought I'd say a similar. Two point six to the, uh, cap.
New development infrastructure, and, no, two point six, new parks and recreation south of Expressway, so we'll take care of that with that. Okay?
Yeah.
Uh, we have a goofo caterer there.
No, sir.
We said that Caplar's gonna have the.
Correct, we're, we're currently trying to look to see if we can, uh, implement an off-road, uh, bike trail there. So it, it, it would be a different trail system. Yes, sir.
Uh, all of those next ones are completed, so we'll take all those out. Uh, the new one is a, uh, West Side Park Improvements, upgrade paving and asphalt, that, that's needed. Maybe we look at that at, uh, wrap-up, once we have a new fund balance?
And also the, uh, sorry, this is Tanya, also the, the, the concession stand, uh, house.
Yes, ma'am, Commissioner, we're, we're currently looking at that right now, to see if we have any funds left over from this fiscal year to do that.
Okay, great.
Okay.
And then the next one is a project we're already doing and rolling over, so that's all of them. We'll make this a little more concise, and we'll bring this back, uh, because there's obviously some projects that you wanna talk about again, but we did that one, and we bring Benson back. Any other question? Okay, so Development Corp, we can just wait, we have a Development Corp session next week. I suggest we just leave it for that, there's not a lot of projects there. Uh, Traffic Drainage Bond, this is obviously our continuation of our bond projects. Uh, you've got this book, right, Eduardo?
Uh, yes, sir.
You wanna go through it? Okay, so look, it's, it's a lot easier, because all of the projects are here, so if they're complete, they won't have a number. Go to page nineteen, and that makes it a lot easier to read.
Oh, yeah. So they're gonna have, they're gonna have a list of?
Yeah.
So, uh, just to make sure, we, we have the same one, Twelfth and Esperanza, oh, you're just looking at the summary?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, the second street, Byron Nelson, that's, that's a drainage project near, near the golf course that we're looking to, to do. The Bicentennial Blue Line is a three-million-dollar project. Again, that, that's, that's through our drainage bond that we've, we've passed. Uh, the Fiber Optic, that's in conjunction with IT.
Yeah, that's for the, uh, signals.
We're looking at doing the Martin Bypass, um, that, that's needed for, for drainage. Then we're looking at the MS Four Stormwater Quality Monitoring Program, uh, kicking that off, and then I think they were looking at trying to do some data with that. Uh, Northgate Lane Drainage Improvement, that's a million, one point four million-dollar project.
Who, who's that in Northgate?
The Northgate Lane Drainage, um, let me, let me, I, it's because I have my notes on a different page, sir. Uh, that project is to construct new storm line, uh, infrastructure, reduce the extent of localized flooding. Uh, the project would include a new storm sewer inlets, lateral efficiency intercept surface, flow of storm water, the trunk line, uh, to the McAllen Lateral.
From where to where in Northgate?
Uh, I don't have the exact location on that, but I can get through.
Ten to twenty-three, there.
That's what I'm thinking. I can, I can get back to you on that, Commissioner. So then we have the Northwest Blue Line Regrade, and I can get you a status on that one. That one's under construction right now. Uh, the Northwest Regional Stormwater Detention Facility, that's under design right now. And then we have Primrose.
Is that one on Oxford or where? Where is that?
That one on Buddy Owens and Taylor?
That's correct.
Where?
Buddy Owens and Taylor?
Taylor Road.
Buddy Owens and Taylor?
And that one's currently under design. Then we have Primrose Avenue at Bicentennial, that's awarded, however, we're, we're seeking railroad authorization, uh, before we can move forward with that project. The, the next one on the list is the Pump Bypass Station, two fifty-five, uh, we're seeking IBWC approval, that's on the south side, uh, before we can, uh, move forward, but that has been awarded already as well. Uh, the next project is Kumasa Avenue and North Eleventh. We, we have awarded that, but we're looking at rescinding award and, and reaw, reawarded, or going back out to, to bid on that. So most of the projects that are on this list, um, I can go through the other ones, uh, the Traffic Signal Study for traffic, uh, Li Engineering, they've already started that back up, traffic is kinda normalized. Um, so the Traffic Director has started that, and, and should be, uh, completing that within the year.
Excuse me, but aren't we doing, uh, on Oxford and Twenty-Ninth Street, behind the, uh, the Police Academy, whatever, trading area? Are we doing a retention area there?
Uh. I have, I, I would have to look at the projects, I don't recall.
Where's the location, Tony?
Behind the training, uh, facility on Oxford and, uh, Twenty-Ninth Street.
There, there is, there is an area of a low spot out there, but I, I haven't recalled a project.
Yeah, I do recall that. Um, we'll, we'll look it up. I think we, we are looking at that. But that's what. It could be, but I remember next to the, near the.
Yeah, we'll, we'll check that out, because I know, uh, Ed, Ed mentioned, uh, lab retention and, uh.
Okay? Okay, so that's the Drainage Bond, and just, that last one is the Traffic Study, just for the sake of the new commissioners, um, we were unwilling, really unwilling, to start this, the Traffic Study, having to do with the signals. We've got all the equipment, because traffic was so low due to, due to the pandemic, and so that's what Ed Lardo's saying, is that it looks like traffic is normalizing, especially if we go back to school, and, uh, we'll be a little bit forward there. So, any questions on that list?
So the next one.
Question, Roy, this is Tanya.
Yes, sir.
And just for the drainage part, uh, you guys mentioned Signal and Arden Nelson. Could you please send the information of where this money is commenced, and when to finish, you know, ballpark of course, and, uh, and the price type of.
Okay?
I appreciate it.
You got it, yes, sir. Okay, so the next one is really small project, it's the last of, of this fund. We've got, uh, at the bottom of the page, Tenth and Business Eighty-three, and then there's several projects on Twenty-third, Ebony, Hackberry, Jackson, and Kendallwood, that we're doing, uh, turning, turning lanes. Uh, then Twenty-Ninth and Oxford, there's, those are finished. And then Bicentennial Construction, obviously, that's ongoing, and then Dove, Forty-first to Benson. So there's very few left on this fund to complete. Now, what's the story on those Twenty-third Street intersections we've been waiting on?
So we have a package of them going out right now, that are, that are at Tech Dot and, and gonna start advertising. Um, we do have two that are, that will, uh, in speaking with the engineer, they'll probably be awarded in the summer of twenty twenty-two, or being let through Tech Dot in the summer of twenty-two. So we had them all together, we saw some that could go, so Renee got those, he's putting them out, and then two are a little further behind, uh, like I said, and they'll be going in the summer of twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Any questions on those? Drainage?
Roy, I was gonna, uh, sorry, this is Tanya.
Yeah.
Okay, well, on, on, on Ware Road, like, on that section, um, south of, uh, Jordan, um, I, I know we had probably discussed some type of medians or something like that on, on that side of the street. Um, is that something that we can probably cut a clip out of this fund?
Uh, not out of this fund, we can, we're, we're gonna have to look at it another, because this one is basically zeroed out. Uh, if you look at your page twenty, if you have it in front of you, I mean, it's, it, all of it's taken. So we can look at another fund, Commissioner. I know that the Engineering Department is looking at that medium, and talking to Tech Dot about, uh, how to handle that. If Tech Dot would approve it, we might be able to fund most of it through them, through the MPO.
Okay.
We'll get a report to you.
Okay, thank you, Roy.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner, you were earlier asked about that area north of the, uh, Northwest Training Center. Actually, that is the Northwest Regional Stormwater.
What I thought it was.
Yeah, it's number twenty-nine, so that's what it was. I misspoke, I had a few.
That's what I thought it was, but I didn't wanna. That's a lot of money, and I, I know that's what it's gonna. And it's a thing we need to, though.
Yeah, because, yeah, because that drains everything just around the Nolana area between Twenty-third and Twenty-ninth, it drains everything south, all the way north, on the Passageway. It catches all the, everything.
Okay, so the next fund is the Drainage Fee, and as, as you know, we, we fund new projects every year as revenue comes in, that's, this is the, on average, dollar, dollar fifty? Is that what it is? Dollar fifty, uh, Drainage Fee for residents? You've got a list of projects that, um, that we're proposing, and again, I'll remind all of you that when we first came up with the Drainage Fee, and the bond issue for that matter, we had them prioritized, uh, and that's what determined what went to bond and what went to Drainage Fee. And even in the Drainage Fee, they were prioritized, so as money comes in, all the projects go up. So you've got, uh, Eighth, uh, North Camelia Avenue, Balboa Acres, Balboa Ditch, Slusgate, uh, Harvey, uh, pump station, uh, Main Street at J, McAllen Lateral, Northeast McAllen, Edinburgh Lateral, uh, Northwest Blue Line, Hibiscus, Quince Avenue and North Eighth, Torres Acres, and Trade Zone Pump Station. Any questions on those?
Are these still the projects that we were looking at using stimulus money, so we did them all some time, or did I get them through?
Um, no, because you all picked all of these projects.
So is this a, is the Drainage Utility Fund still on its normal schedule?
Yes.
Or did we, were we gonna try to expedite it?
Uh, well.
What, we have seven years left, right?
Yeah.
We're trying to get done maybe three?
So what we did was, you know that? So the staff had suggested that you take a slug of money, I think we had twenty-four million, and, uh, you all took other projects.
Okay. Twenty-four million would be the remainder, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
For, for.
To, to move everything up.
That's what it would cost to move everything up?
Mm-hmm.
Do I take ahead on the.
You can do that one year anyway.
The, the Drainage, Drainage Fee, that one doesn't have a, a mention?
That's correct. We, it doesn't not have a sunset, it does require that we review it on a yearly basis, and you can terminate it at any time.
Extended perpetuity.
Any questions on that? Okay, so that's the, that, uh, the. Uh, the next one is actually, you already went through it. Uh, the, this is what we're calling it, the Infrastructure and Improvement Fund, is the exercise we went through last week. There's the forty million or so, uh, in the, in the fund. So unless you want to revisit it, like, um, and then the next one is pretty easy, it's the Parks Facility that you awarded. Park Station Number Two, of course, has been complete for, for some time. And we should have the Parks Facility complete this year. And then the, this, one of the last ones, Quinta Mazatlán. Uh, obviously, um, we're still working on revenues, and we, we should have a report to you maybe as early as the next City Commission meeting, on where we are with these projected revenues. But, uh, those folks at Friends of Quinta, which are your, you know, our, our citizens have done an amazing job to get to where we are. And for the most part, it's outside money, um, to do the construction. And we're very, very close. We're within a couple of million dollars of, of being able to bid this project. Any questions on that? There, that's where all the revenue is, is projected to come from, at the rate. And then Turge Number Two A is the Turge on the south side. Uh, we are suggesting that we look at El Rancho Drainage Improvements this coming year, uh, from that fund. And Michelle and Finance Department keep track of that.
I, um, were we going to meet again on that Turge? I know we, I think we met for the Turges Two while, while I was going on.
Yeah, we only need to meet once a year.
Okay.
Yeah, you all basically just, uh, approve the budget.
Okay.
That's all of them. That's all the capital projects, so uh, we'll bring that fund back. I think, I think we'll be able to do some, some more good things. Any questions? There, that's all we got today.
Great.